Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are meeting on a continued application of Forty Oak Street Development LLC for a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit application. As it applies to the premise known as Forty Oak Street, Peabody, Mass., map 095, lot 089X, the petitioner seeks to construct 80 rental units and the property is located in an R4 zoning district. Tonight, we are going to hear from our city engineer. We are going to hear from the third-party reviewer. We are going to hear from Mr. Rozagnol Senior, who is an ex-exalted ruler of the Elks. He would like to speak tonight on flooding. And any butters that are here also that would like to say something different and new about the flooding, we'd be more than happy to hear from you. So, let's start off this evening by hearing from Mr. Will Pollitz from the City of Peabody. And please remember, board members and anybody speaking at the podium, to just speak directly close to the microphone because a lot of people watching and in the audience seem to have a hard time hearing us. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. William Pollitz with the Department of Public Services, City Engineer. Thank you for having me here this evening. So, as part of the Department of Public Services review of Forty Oak Street, we are in the process of reviewing traffic, which we're prepared to discuss this evening. We're also reviewing water for fire protection, wastewater, and we are waiting on the applicant to provide us information so we can engage a consultant to do a peer review of stormwater. So, we're waiting for that from the applicant at this point. But as part of the traffic, we received Vanessen Associates Traffic Report, and we hired World Tech Engineering, one of the city's traffic consultants, to do a peer review. And Representative from World Tech, Mr. Alan Cludier, is here this evening to speak upon their peer review. And I'll also be here to answer any questions. Our department is expected to put out a memorandum.
Could we all please silence our cellphones?
So, we'll put out a memorandum based upon what we hear this evening, but on traffic, but we expect to have that out this week, which will cover the topics that World Tech has touched base on and any additional topics our department sees as necessary in respect to traffic and pedestrian activity that this development will increase. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Alan.
Please just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alan Cludier. I'm a traffic engineer with World Tech. As William mentioned, we were hired by the city to review the study. Can everybody hear me fine over there? I'm usually pretty loud, so it's usually not too much of a problem, but... So, we produce a memorandum, which actually summarized, gave a review of all of our findings, a summary. I thought I'd kind of summarize a little bit of it right now, and then, of course, I'm here for any questions that anybody has. So, I guess this is not necessarily in the same order I put the memo. I was just trying to, you know, think of what would make sense for tonight. So, just as a little review, first, I guess diving right into some numbers, and this is this first part, we are in agreement with the traffic study that was reviewed. So, just to throw out a few numbers. So, the project consists of 80 apartment units. It was projected to generate on a daily basis about 283 vehicles coming in, 283 vehicles coming out over a day period. Probably more important than the daily numbers are really what's happening during the peak hours. It's a lot easier to kind of, I guess, wrap your head around what's happening over an hour, 24 hours is awfully difficult to understand, to really capture what the impact might be. So, during the morning was going to be about six vehicles coming in and about 30 coming out. First question people have, well, why is that less than the 80? Well, not everybody leaves during the same hour, so this is during one hour, you know, it might be 7:30 to 8:30 or whatever. Some people leave for work earlier, some later. During the afternoon, the numbers are a little higher, 36 coming in, 20 coming out. Makes sense, a little bit more people are coming in than leaving, but people are more active in the afternoon. They might, you know, have to go out and run errands or whatever. And that was based off of other similar type apartment developments that are contained in the ITE Trip Generation Manual. They follow standard practices. Again, these are basically numbers that were, you know, taken from other studies. So, we don't have any issue with those numbers, and they, you know, should be fairly accurate. To kind of, I like to, I guess, then take another step to try to get something that, you know, is something even more like, what can you visualize out there? So, that means essentially in the morning, it's going to be about one vehicle every two minutes or so coming in or out of the site. And during the afternoon, it's going to be about one extra vehicle every minute coming in or out of the site. On Oak Street, and they actually provided a summary of what the volume or percentage increase was going to be on area roadways. And for a lot of the area roadways, it's not very high because, for one, the volumes are higher on those streets. But also, you know, once you get to, you know, Washington Street or whatever, or Aborn, you know, you start distributing some of your traffic. So, you know, everybody's got to go, who's leaving the site's going to all have to go to Oak Street westbound. From there, you know, some will take a left, some will take a right, so the numbers go a little bit lower. The traffic volume increase on Oak Street is going to be around 8% per day. That's how much the existing traffic is going to be increased because of this development. And one thing definitely notice on Oak Street, there's definitely already, you know, some traffic is using that as a little bit of a cut-through route to get to where they're going because it's not a whole lot on Oak Street right now that is generating, you know, a lot of single-family homes and what have you. But definitely there's traffic that comes from Aborn, you know, takes a right, takes a left, and gets where they want to go. So, now that we talked about the numbers and what we're going to, you know, what's the project going to generate, we wanted to look at what's going to be the impact of the project. And a lot of the impact, well, first of all, it's pretty much limited to Oak Street. You know, once you start getting outside of Oak Street, you know, people are taking rights and lefts, and they're, you know, get distributed a little bit more. But on Oak Street, as I mentioned, that 8% is a little bit higher. So, that's really where, you know, we were, I was focused a little bit more when I was reviewing and trying to see what the impacts are. A lot of the impact actually has to do with what the existing conditions are, and that it's pretty poor for a lot of the conditions on Oak Street. So, the pavement's in poor condition, the sidewalks are in poor condition, they're breaking up, there's not much separation between the sidewalks and the roadway, you know, people park on them. So, as a pedestrians, it's maybe not the most inviting street to actually be walking along. And it's not just me saying that. I was also pulled up in Walk Boston, they did a walk audit of the downtown area, including that roadway. So, part of it's, you know, you've got some poor conditions right now. Obviously, there's going to be some more traffic and hopefully more pedestrians. You know, we want people walking on the street if there's, you know, this development. We don't want them just using their vehicles, we want them walking. There's a site distance issue that really wasn't mentioned in the study that I kind of brought up at the intersection of Oak and Winter. If you're coming northbound on Winter, it's really difficult to see. I was looking to your left for oncoming traffic, so I felt like that really needs to be reviewed as part of the study. That's one reason why right now it's essentially signed as an all-way stop, even though if you were to look at volumes, you'd say, well, why is Oak Street stopping? That's the majority of traffic. I'm pretty sure it was put up because of the poor site distance. And then capacity at some of the intersections, that was actually something that we raised issue with the capacity analysis at Winter Street and then Oak Street, you know, further west, where some of the analysis wasn't, needed to be refined. So, we had some issues with that, so we didn't feel like that part of what was in the study was accurately depicting what happens on Oak Street. So, that's something where, I mean, this February 21st, we actually, I dated this memo, and of course, it didn't get to them, so I don't think they have anything. If they have something, I haven't had a chance to review any supplemental material. And then we also raised a number of issues with the site plan, really site circulation because being, you know, traffic, that was more in my purview. So, we had issues such as, you know, snow storage, what's going to happen with the snow storage. I didn't see any dumpsters, you know, how are trash trucks going to be able to move around the site? You know, we want to make sure people can get around the site properly. And then, I think probably last thing was parking. There's 126 spaces currently identified, however, 20 of them are essentially blocked in underneath a building, so, you know, I would say almost you had 106 usable spaces. So, it's starting to get really close to, you know, is there enough parking? There are some studies that have shown that that might be enough, using, you know, IT has done some studies. I've done a few myself years ago at some suburban sites that showed a higher number. But we're really right at that limit as far as is there enough parking for the number of units? And part of that goes of, well, if there's not, what happens? And for here, it's essentially going to be that people are going to be parking on Oak Street because there's really not somewhere else for them to park. So, I asked for additional information and really justification for the number of parking that they are proposing on the site. And then, I guess, well, I said parking was last, but maybe it's not. So, we also identified that really as part of this, you know, we should probably be looking at some kind of mitigation about ways to mitigate the impacts of the project. You know, there's, as I mentioned earlier, we've got poor pavement out there, we've got poor sidewalks, it's essentially going to be increasing the number of vehicles, pedestrians on these, on the roadway, on the sidewalks. We have site distance issues at some locations, and, you know, we're adding more traffic to that. So, we definitely thought that, you know, some mitigation might be warranted for this project. So, I think that's my, I guess, summary. And like I said, I can answer any questions now or later, I'll be around all night, so...
Sure. Through the chair. I just have a hard time with numbers sometimes. I know you made a comment that, you know, six in, 30 out. I know it doesn't add up to 80. Why is 80 the number? Because of the number of units?
Oh, yeah, that was the number of units, sorry.
So, you're basing the study only that there's only going to be one vehicle per unit, which I think is pretty unreasonable.
So, what the data that they used, and again, so it's taken from what's called the Institute of Transportation Engineers, Trip Generation Manual. And what they've done is basically traffic engineers like me who have studied, you know, open developments, you know, it might be an apartment unit with 100 units, 10 units. There's a lot of data where they've, people have just done a count of an existing facility and then send it in. So, really, you know, if it's a shopping center or a part, for this one, it's apartments, essentially you can find out what the average rate is. So, essentially, for, you know, if this was 160 units, you'd have about double the amount of traffic we had here. So, it's based off of number of units of how much traffic was observed at other similar type facilities.
Personally, do you find that accurate? I mean, we're looking at affordable housing, which means probably both members of the family are going to be working, and if there's any children, once they get a school age, they're going to be going to school. Maybe they have their own vehicle, maybe they work after school. Do you find that one vehicle per unit is an accurate way to look at this?
Well, that is, essentially, one vehicle leaving during the peak hour. So, the other person, I know, like me and my wife, we don't leave at the same time. She leaves, you know, an hour and a half before me because I bring the kids to school. So, essentially, it works out kind of more like that. On a daily basis, you had 283 vehicles leaving. So, that's where, you know, you're much above the 80 units, but not everybody leaves at the same time. So, I've done, I've done counts at a number of things myself. Usually, I mean, these are averages, so some developments are a little bit higher, some a little bit lower. If we have good access to public transit, then you could have maybe a little bit lower if you're... But generally, these are suburban, these are not in the City of Boston type things. Those are kind of a whole different animal.
Does the applicant have, does the applicant have anything that they would like to respond to this?
Good evening, for the record, Scott Thornton with VAI. We prepared the traffic assessment for the project. We just received these comments last Thursday afternoon. We'll be preparing a comprehensive response to the assessment and to the comments and providing that back to the city.
At our next meeting, you'll respond to this?
Yeah, I mean, what I'd like to do, what I'd prefer to do is, if it's okay with you folks, is to go, you know, provide information to World Tech, have them review it, and then if they have any other additional questions, they could get them back, you know, through you, get those comments back through you to us, we can respond so that we have, you know, everything worked out by the next time we come to meet in front of you. I don't know if that'll be the next meeting. You know, hopefully, we can get everything worked out within a month.
You're going to need it a whole month?
Usually, you know, we want to make sure that they have enough time to review everything and then get it back to you.
Okay, we'll be making another date this evening.
Okay.
You're staying for the duration?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that as of, like I said earlier, well, the Public Services Department will actually be issuing out a memorandum in respect to what mitigation we'll be looking for from the applicant and provide that to the zoning board along with the applicant's team so that way they can address those at the exact, at the same time that they're addressing the World Tech.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you think there is anybody in the audience that would like to come up to the podium and discuss a little bit about traffic? Anybody have any traffic concerns at this point? Okay, think about it, we will discuss this one more time. How about Mr. Rozagnol Senior? Name and address for the record, okay?
Yeah. My name is Tom Rozagnol Senior. I've been a member of the Peabody Elks for 40 years. I've been exalted ruler twice, which means I'm the overseer of the lodge in the meeting, in the different meetings. But what I understand, I'm hearing rumors that the lodge does not flood. Okay, we know about the parking lot, but we're talking about the lodge itself. I've seen the lodge flood several times, and every time we get two or three inches of rain in the parking lot, it flows right down the back stairs and right into the subpumps that we have down there. Sometimes it overflows and it goes into the lodge, and we have water lines that are on the water, on the wall, where you can see where the flooding occurred. And sometimes when it really gets bad, the furniture starts floating, and so it gets pretty bad. We have two subpumps going into the, one going into the lounge area, and then we have another subpump in the boiler room. And we have the boiler sitting on a two-foot block of cement, so if it does, water does come in in the back door, that it doesn't flood. So, like I said, before, we used to have bingo down there, and the parking lot flooded so much that we had to go out there sometimes and get the cars, or the customers that were playing bingo and move them so they wouldn't have to walk out and wait out to their car to get their car. So, I just want to point out that this is not a good area to build this proposed project, and that's about all I have to say.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
So, when you went out to the parking lot to move the bingo cars, where would you move them to?
Well, we moved them to higher ground because it seems like the water really floods in the middle, so we had to move them on the side or move them up on the sidewalks on the sides of both streets.
Would you say that that was a big problem for you?
That was, that was. I mean, it didn't occur all the time, of course not, because the people wouldn't put up with it, we wouldn't have any customers. But when it did rain, like especially when it rained like two days in a row, that's when we had a problem. And the worst part about it is the lot was clear when they parked there, and then when the rains came, that's when we had to move them, so...
And was snow removal ever a problem?
I'm not too sure about the snow removal. I know we do have contractors that do the snow removal. And if you know the lodge, there's a dirt lot in the rear of it, and that's where they push all the snow from the parking lot. So, it clears it up pretty good. But of course, with this project, there's no place to put snow, so... All right?
Very much.
So, I'll leave this with you, and thank you.
Do I leave with the secretary? Yeah. Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to add any information about flooding?
Hi, my name is Charlene Cruz, and I... Okay. My name is Charlene Cruz, and I live at 5 Sandbarn Street. Everything what he's saying about the flood is true. I got pictures from 2011 when around our house, we had two more feet of dry in the middle of you, and the parking lot was so packed with water. And I got different years when the rain does get flooded and pictures of the Elks with the water.
Are you able to let us keep those pictures?
Yes, yes, I would like to let you guys keep these. And that's my concern is I'm the one that has the flood insurance on the side of the Elks because everybody else has their house paid off. And number nine, they just moved in, so they do have to have flood insurance. And number one, just bought, a guy just bought it, so he's going to be having flood insurance pretty soon. So, I did write up some, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I would like you guys to keep this and look it up, you know, over with the pictures. Those are different years, but with the, my husband with the yellow raincoat right there is 2011. It came three feet from the fence into our yard.
And what do you have written up?
Excuse me?
What do you have written up?
I'm talking about the flood situation and how I have to have flood insurance because of mortgage. I tried to take it off of FEMA, but they said the house needs to be five inches jacked up, and I can't do that because my husband is gone.
These pictures are basically, were taken in 2011?
Not all of them, only the one with my husband in it. The rest of them is between a couple other times, like 2014. I have pictures of the tow truck in back of the Elks towing out people, but I didn't get those printed in time.
Would you like to hand those out to us?
Well, you can look at them or have her before them.
But do you want to give them up? That's for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you could give them to the secretary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on flooding? Well, ladies and gentlemen, it looks like, no comments from, it looks like this evening we have heard all the information that we planned to hear. We will conclude, and we, our next meeting, and we'll form a date in a minute, will be hearing from Water and Sewer, we'll have a traffic follow-up, and we'll also hear from the Fire Department. Now, we need to get another date or our next date. So, we have, our next regular zoning board meeting is March 16th, and it's a pretty light agenda that evening. Do you think you might remotely be ready March 16th?
I don't know that we'll have everything resolved and have everything taken care of in a couple of weeks. I don't know if there's other issues, other things to present, but do you want to just do it all at once? Excuse me just a second.
Where's Mr. Pollitz? Oh, do you think you'll be ready the 16th to talk about Water and Sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, and other members of the board. For the record, John Smallack, I've lost my voice, so excuse my voice here. I think that we'll be able to submit updated civil plans and a stormwater report very shortly, and so I'm not sure if that will allow the city adequate time to review those prior to the, to the 16th. But I just wanted to mention that as well, from a timing perspective, it may be worth having a little more time once, once the city has a chance to review that so that, so that the city could have a more comprehensive review of everything so that we can try to be as efficient as possible. I know it's taking a little bit more time than we expected, but I think it would be helpful to have a more complete response.
Instead of piecemealing this, so how about March 16th is our regular board meeting? And at that time, we also will hear part of, another part of this 40B, which will be Water and Sewer and the Fire Department. So, what you need to come before us would be another date, which is after the 16th, which would be what? What do we have? So, today is the, do you think?
The 30th of the 6th, or...
One, two, three weeks is not enough for you?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, that brings us to April 13th.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
April 13th? For the rest of the traffic tie-up, I mean, follow-up.
Shouldn't the applicant also be prepared to follow up on Water and Sewer if there should be any follow-up? Because that would be a month after presentation as well.
Right, and Water and Sewer, follow-up. Everything, everything should be from third-party review, should be all able to be taken care of on April 13th, 4/13.
What about stormwater?
Stormwater.
I would say, excuse me, waters, excuse me, yes, I believe Water, Sewer and traffic. I don't know about stormwater. It'll depend on how fast the applicant provides us documentation. We don't have a, we don't have a, we know the firm that we'll be hiring, AECOM. They've done work in this area for the city in the past, but depending on how, depending on the timeframe of the applicant providing us the documents, we need to submit it to AECOM, get a proposal, which won't take too long, but then it's back in the applicant's hands. We need to then have the applicant sign an agreement saying that they're paying for this proposal, I mean, for this review, and provide us a check. So, depending on how fast the applicant is able to get us the original package and then follow up with payment for the third-party review, until all that takes place, the third-party review won't even start. So, I do think we can do the three for April 13th. So I do think we can do the three for April 13th and we can see where we stand on stormwater. I'm just not confident that we'll actually have a report on stormwater for you that evening.
So it looks like storm, we hope for stormwater, but it doesn't look like, yeah, we can be hopeful, but?
For April, April 16th, sure. 13th, I'm sorry. Yeah. And the other item I wanted to mention as well is that we should have the revised civil as well as the stormwater report this week. So we'll get that to you as quickly as possible and turn around any scope as quickly as possible and then get the peer review fees to you as well, so that review can start.
So we are all in agreement that we will hear another part of this on the 16th and we will hear a lot more of it on April 13th. Are we all set with that? Any questions? Concerns?
So we are requesting for continuance to the 16th at 7:00 PM at City Hall. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
And thank you very much, everybody, for coming this evening. I hope it was very informative. This meeting is adjourned.